Call and order the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three organizational and regular business meeting of the Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that all council members are present and others in the audience. If you could all join me in a moment of silence, please. Please stand. Join me in the lunge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now prepared to read the abstract from the municipal elections. The county board of elections for Zed County, Moore County, having opened canvas and judicially judicially determined that the original returns of the election of precincts of this county, held as above stated, do hereby certify that the test is a true abstract thereof and contains the number of legal ballots cast at each precinct for each office or referendum name. If the name of each person or choice voted for, your party affiliation where applicable, and the number of votes cast for each person. And I'll now read the abstracts. For the Foxfire Village Council member, Janice Gregridge, re-elected, received one hundred and twenty-seven votes, Mary Gilroy, one hundred and nine votes, Warren Morgan, eighty-seven votes, and George Hendricks, twenty-three votes. Questions on that? Okay, we'll now have Lisa as the guilty of office to her non-.
Yes. Flags if anyone wants.
Pictures.
Yeah, if anybody wants a picture, right, front of the flag.
Front of the flag.
Do them at the same time?
First chance.
I didn't know if we were doing this individually.
Do it same time? Pardon? Same time?
Um, actually, at this point, yeah, we can do them both at the same time. Yeah, because you're both council members, so we'll do it. Okay, let's see. I'll try to hold this and watch you all. Yes, right here, right here. And if you could read the first line and state your name, yes.
Hi. Janice Gregridge. Do solemnly swear affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, and the ordinances of Foxfire Village, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as councilman.
As councilman.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Don's like, run, Don, run. Door, the door.
And Mary.
I'm moving up.
Please join.
Hey, Donna. Want to sit?
No. Okay. Did you? Don, don't you go there.
Can't move all my piles. Just sit. The next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor. So the council will elect a mayor within their body. Someone would need to make a motion.
I'm sorry. I make a motion to elect Janice Gregridge for mayor.
I'll second. I just want to ask, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How do you, how do you, I'm concerned about the finance part of it. I don't know how that would work, so I'm thinking, what are your thoughts on if you were to leave that duty and become mayor? Is that something, a skill that is transferable, easy enough? Is that something, Mary, that you feel comfortable if, if she lost that and gave it to you?
I'm confident that, that Mary could fulfill the duties with no problem at all.
Okay. Good, that was my only question.
Do I have to do that again then?
No. We need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ahs.
There you go. Congratulations.
Our new mayor, Janice Gregridge.
No, we're gonna move right now.
Oh, I can't.
So just, you can stay. You can, you can make a nomination pro temp then.
Okay.
Um, I would like to nominate Janet Norman as mayor pro temp. I don't know if there are any other people that would like to nominate a candidate.
I'll second that.
So what do we say, all in favor?
Well, are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mary for pro temp, just based on her experience and so forth.
Okay. Um, what we need to do here then is whoever, okay, you would need to vote first for the first nomination, and it would be who would receive the most votes.
Good.
Do we have to raise our hands?
Uh, name is fine, just, okay. For the nomination of Janet Norman, those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, so four and with a no. Okay. Well, I'm joining.
You're gonna do fine, I'm sure.
Okay.
Get the hell out of that seat now. Just kidding.
And the mayor, we would now appoint.
Oh, I need to appoint a finance officer. And I, I would like to appoint Mary Gilroy as finance officer for Foxfire Village.
Do we vote on that, or is that just?
That's a mayor's appointment, so that's, that's good.
Cool.
Actually, let's do it now. I'm going to swear both Janet in as mayor pro temp and Mary in as finance officer, so.
Stand up again, Mary.
This one at a time, though.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Are we flagging?
Yeah.
Raise your hand. All right. Got it. Hi, Janet Norman. Do you solemnly swear affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, and the ordinances of Foxfire Village, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as?
Finance officer.
Mayor pro temp.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Mary. You're up. Do I have to get sworn in as mayor?
That's a good idea.
Oh, yeah, I thought.
That was a test.
What? We're gonna do one more of you.
That was your first test.
We're moving ahead here.
I guess we all, all three of us could have done it at the same time.
Too many here. Okay.
Hi, Janice Gregridge. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, and the ordinances of Foxfire Village, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor? So help me God.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, we did that. We have to recognize all people.
I figured they left already.
Well, Don, I want to thank you on behalf of the council and all the residents of Foxfire for all your service. You've done a great job, not only on the council, but planning and zoning, and for many years. So we do thank you.
Don't cry, Don.
I appreciate it. I appreciate working with the council, this council, previous councils, and all of the residents of Foxfire. For the most part, it's been a real pleasure. The only thing I will miss is being able to work with all of you and with the staff each day. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get out of everybody's here.
Bye.
I'm out of here. Okay, um, I do need to make a couple of changes. I need to amend the regular agenda to add the minutes of the closed session for November fourteenth and November thirtieth to the consent agenda. Can I add something also to the agenda? Yes? I just want to go over the spectrum numbers, because I'd like to make a decision on that tonight.
Oh, okay. So that and spectrum, okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda is approved. Okay, so I guess the first, the next thing is public comment period for anything that is, oh, I'm sorry. No, you're fine. No, the next item would be to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have one item that needs to be, I'd like to have adjusted on November fourteenth. Item number eight, D, first bullet, new well update. And rather than say this is the biggest producer, I would like to say one of, as well as one of the biggest producers.
One of them, okay.
I have to go back and do some research. We have approximately fifty gallons coming out of two other wells.
Okay. I'm gonna change, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Wasn't that a good?
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have one item that needs to be, I'd like to have adjusted on November fourteenth. Item number eight, D, first bullet, new well update. And rather than say this is the biggest producer, I would like to say one of, as well as one of the biggest producers.
One of them, okay.
I have to go back and do some research. We have approximately fifty gallons coming out of two other wells.
Okay. I'm gonna change, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Wasn't that a good?
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to public comment. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. So this public comment is for anything that is not on the agenda. Are there any? Yes.
Eddie Moody, seventeen, Buffalo Lake Road. I'm gonna be the first one to get complaints, you boys. Nah.
Time's up.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Foxfire Property Owners Association. Our annual meeting will be January sixteenth at the clubhouse, and I'd like to extend an invite to the mayor. Hopefully, she can continue with the tradition of giving a talk about the state of the village.
Okay.
And if you can't do it, maybe somebody else on the board could.
That is January sixteenth?
January sixteenth.
And what time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
It's when the meeting starts, there'll be at least refreshments beforehand.
Okay. I'd be honored to do so. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Moving on to the zoning administrators' report.
This report covers zoning activities from November fifteenth through today, December twelfth. Currently, a total of forty-three homes are under construction or at their beginning stages. I've received no single-family resident applications this month. It was a shock. We did issue three, not thirty, three certificate of occupancy, one for a house at Four Font Circle, sixty-one Richmond, and one sixty Mister Ridge in Grand Pines. Two other permits were issued, and those were for fences. So this day was a pretty slow month.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we move on to council member reports, and I will give my final report as finance officer. As of November thirtieth, balance on hand for the general fund is two million, nine hundred and seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars. Of that, we have reserve funds of one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. In the water department, we have total funds on hand, one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. And of that, reserve is four hundred and seventy-one thousand, seventy-six dollars. And capital trust funds, we've got a total of three point four million in capital trust, and our interest to date, year to date, is about sixty-four thousand dollars.
Nice.
And I don't think I have anything else on the finance side at the moment. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next is streets and parks.
I'm gonna insert my spectrum info there. Just real quick, too, regarding the lending library at the park, it has been repaired by Mick McKew, so I'd like to shout out to him for repairing it, and the books are back in, in the library out at the park.
And did you confirm it was not vandalism?
According to Mick, he said he doesn't believe it was vandalism.
Good, that's great.
So we're good there.
That's great.
And I, I do want to thank whoever reported that it was broken. They came to the office and reported it, so it was very nice of them to do that, so we could get out there and call Mick right away, and he got the books out, and.
What was broken on it?
The door.
Oh.
He said he needed thicker material and, or whatever, but he fixed it, the books are back, so all ready to go.
Yeah, I saw it, looks good.
All right, so real quick, I handed out the spectrum numbers that I've got, and I'd like to be able to vote on this tonight, if you want to do this. For three locations, the two locations that we would have would be the village and the PD, which would have the six hundred MPS, MBPS speed. That would be a total of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents a month. And we can reduce the speed at the pool, we don't need the six hundred, we can go down to three hundred there, and that would be sixty-four ninety-nine a month. Yeah, there will be two, we got, I got them to come down a little bit on the rate versus the other rate I gave everybody last time, but we would have a one-time charge of a hundred dollars for the village to install and a hundred dollars for the pool. But annual, or monthly, we, for the three locations, we're looking at two hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. And right now, what we're paying, and that would be an annual cost of thirty-five hundred dollars, Velocity is charging us twenty-two seventy a year. Did I say annual? Yes. Okay, so it would be a difference for the year of twelve hundred dollars to go with spectrum. And if we, if I can get back to him tomorrow, they would have the installation done by the end of December, and I'd like to, because Velocity charges us quarterly, and they end at the end of December. So if we want to do this, let me know, so I can get ahold of Spectrum and get us on the schedule.
So the installation is like two hundred and fifty dollars?
Two hundred.
Oh, it's two, it's two hundred.
A hundred for the police and.
And us.
And us, and a hundred for the pool.
Okay, so.
It's a one-time charge of two hundred. And I can't add the fire department, we're not gonna get a bigger discount if we add them, and they're already paying more than we would be paying monthly. So there was no advantage to add them to the program.
Okay.
So will they be able to do the installation at the end of the month?
Oh, if they can get a schedule, yeah. And I, I don't want it, I want to be able to get them on board before we cancel Velocity.
Right, I was just gonna ask. So worst-case scenario, we end up paying for another quarter, or can we?
I think we can pro-rate with them, can't we?
With Velocity?
Yeah.
Most likely, I believe we can.
Okay.
Real quick, will there be downtime here for them to install that interrupts?
No, that's why I want to leave the Velocity on, because you remember when we spoke to whatever, Tom?
Yeah.
He said basically they pulled it, plugged it out and put it in.
Oh, we have, okay.
Remember? Okay, so, anybody, everybody, anybody have any questions, concerns?
So our server people and our computer people or phone people are all on board with?
Right.
It's plug and play kind of thing.
Yep, and they were a little surprised we hadn't changed up to this point.
Yeah, me too.
Chris, that's his name.
Chris, yeah.
Yeah, the computer, yeah, computer doctors. And they will be here during the installation, so.
Oh, good. That's good.
Now, will that affect what the police officers use in their vehicles?
No.
No, that's totally.
It's just strictly the PD.
Okay.
Just their office. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
You, you're, you're good. I do budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Oop, we got the money we need.
Do you have to go on it?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Do I make a motion to accept moving over the spectrum?
I'll make a motion to move over the spectrum.
I'll second.
All approved?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving the spectrum. I will get in touch with them tomorrow.
Thank goodness.
Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public safety, Councilman Nelson.
As far as the fire department, there's nothing to report today, but except their, the fire engine will have a live Santa Claus in the parade with the FPOA jeeps, golf carts, et cetera, so they'll have a live Santa Claus on that fire engine, which will be good for the kids. And you, and. Okay.
Wait, wait, can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed, I can't remember what it was, pictures with Santa? When, when is that happening, so we can get that?
It's gonna start at four o'clock. It was like four o'clock, yeah.
Four o'clock?
The carts are gonna be on display with Santa at four o'clock.
At the.
At the clubhouse.
At the clubhouse. The parade leaves at five.
Okay, that's a Saturday.
It's Sunday.
Sunday, okay, Sunday. So if they want their pictures taken with Santa Claus, be at the clubhouse at four.
Correct.
Okay. Are we gonna put that on the website?
If I get some information, could you send me a PDF? That'd be great.
We can take it.
Okay.
Thank you, that's great. I'm glad to hear we have enough golf carts participating, wanting to participate in classic cars.
Because it's always fun to watch, there's a lot of people, we broaden the category.
Next up, Chief Shu, police department.
I'm gonna keep it kind of short today. You've got the numbers there in front, guys, gave everybody a copy. The, the front page will be for November first through today, and then the page behind that will represent calls for service from January first of this year up until today's date. And then I'll get with Lisa again the first of the year and get her updated copy of the full calendar year for calls for service to be put on the website. One of the topics that we've been working on, obviously, is the speeding issue on Woodland Circle. After speaking with Councilman Nelson, a couple other people, and doing some riding around myself, I went over to Pinehurst and meandered around in the middle of some of their side roads that have a lot of hills and twists and turns, and something that's very prevalent over there are the hidden driveway signs. I went online and looked, we can get those signs for about fifty bucks off Amazon, two foot by two foot, I can get a pole to stick it in the ground. I think maybe that, that may be at least something else that we can do to remedy the issues with the blind driveway at the top of the hill, or not only that, not only that house, but the house below it. I think that both residents would benefit from that more so than speed bumps or anything else. So we have moved the digital speed sign back to the top of the hill to kind of keep it moving from, from place to place. So kind of keep that in mind, I'll get with you, and we'll work together on that if you'd like.
Can I talk to Gary about getting another pole? I have a stop sign coming for off that one, what road was that? Off of Woodland Circle?
Oh, down at the bottom, I don't know.
Yeah, so the stop sign should be coming.
Yes, I'll get two, I'll go and get two signs then from DOT.
I'll start at the bottom.
No, no, no.
No, no, that's a side group, it's not called set come out.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's why I need a, I talked to Gary about getting a post for that stop sign, so I'll need at least two.
The, the one I ordered has a sign, a post coming.
Oh, it does.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, we should probably have some of those posts available anyway.
I'll go ahead and see, think this a couple, just to have.
Okay, thank you.
For surplus purposes. The only other thing I wanted to get on, obviously, was the patrol vehicle that's been off the road for over four months now. Kind of come to a boiling point with Dodge dealership last week, to the point where I actually had Michael go with me and hijack the service manager, put him in the car and say, hey, this is what's going on. So they're still working on it. In the meantime, you know, we've been trying to find the car, haven't had any luck. We had got a call from Clinton Dodge Performance Dodge in Clinton, North Carolina, they actually had a Durango like we were looking for, for less than the state contract price. Department couldn't pick it up, their budget fell through, so we were next in line on their list. So you probably saw when you pulled in, the black Durango, they're back in our parking lot, feel free to take a look at it whenever you leave. So after the cost of the Durango, and then looking at the cost of the outfit, obviously, the department will absorb the cost of the outfit, that's something I can do to save the town some money, but the, the equipment that has to go in that new vehicle is not plug and play from the charter, so obviously, we'll have to get new equipment. We're looking at just under five thousand for the equipment to totally outfit the vehicle, so you're looking at a total cost of under forty-seven thousand at the, at the end of the day by the time we get done.
What was it, I'm sorry?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yes, sir. And, you know, we originally were thinking forty-five for the vehicle alone to begin with, so we actually got, got some breaks. Michael did some calling around for, for the equipment and got some pretty good deals on it, so that's all I really have for the department, unless anyone has any questions.
I have one question. The other speed signs that were ordered, the three, when do we expect to see those?
He told me he would send me an email whenever they hit production and when they were shipping, shipping out, that way we'd kind of be looking for an invoice when they, when they come in. So I haven't heard anything back yet, but he did tell me it would be mid to late December originally. I could touch, touch base with him and kind of get it.
I was just curious as to when we can expect those.
Sure. Two things. First, thank you for all the legwork you did in getting that vehicle. I know you were out there hustling and beating the drum, so thank you for doing that and saving us, saving us some money.
It was definitely, it was definitely the department cohesion was there and everybody did their job, so it wasn't just a one-man show, it was everybody, thank you.
Well, thanks for ramrodding it. I know it's, you're gonna be happy to be, be, put that behind you. I did want to make mention of the numbers, your yearly numbers, very impressive stats. You guys really are out there, clearly out there on the street all the time, doing the job, and it certainly shows here in those numbers.
It was, it was, this year, and the numbers go up every year, but this was definitely the largest number of calls for service we've had for the year. You know, we were kind of hanging around at five to seven thousand mark, which was a pretty astronomical jump to begin with, and now if you look, we're just under, so we're just, just under ten thousand calls for service for, for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's humble.
We're definitely trying to do our best, for sure. Thank you.
Great to see you guys on the street.
Thank you.
Well, you guys assigned that vehicle.
The vehicle will actually go into Sergeant Amoskeeta, since he is over investigations, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be carried around for that particular job, not only that, but Chris being our traffic guy, quote unquote, he really needs to be in a sedan. So the wear and tear on that SUV, just some trying to avoid versus the sedan, two-wheel-drive sedan, so. Michael will be in the Durango, and we'll be putting Chris in the charter, the new charter we just got, definitely up this past year.
Okay. Thank you. What are we gonna do with that other car, if and when it ever gets fixed?
At this point, we're so far into it, and just practically, we have a new, new car, as far as parts go in the front end when we get back. One of the things we ran into this time was we were short on vehicles, and Derek, the part-time officer, has been having to double up with another officer just to do his job because we only have one spare vehicle, quote unquote, and that was the part-time officer's vehicle that he used. So what we're gonna do is keep that vehicle online for just the part-time slash spotter car, backup car, in case another vehicle goes off the road, at least we've got a backup at least we've got a backup patrol vehicle we can use as a patrol vehicle. Um, because Explorer's starting to get some mileage on it, um, but we definitely want to try to hold on to both of them as long as we can because after this experience, we really need to have at least two vehicles online to be able to use.
So are we continuing to dump money into this, this charger?
They're, they're.
Or is this kind of.
I received a bill, but I refuse to pay the bill because it didn't fix it.
Right.
So everything so far has still been under warranty, but again, they've done so much work to it, we might as well hold on to it as long as we can and, and use it.
So it's under warranty right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Everything, except for one thing, again, the, the one thing that they tried to charge for didn't fix it, so I pretty much told them we're about to eat that one.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I like the idea of being able to move it around a little bit when it's not in use, that, that is a great.
And of course, the residents around now, they know sometimes, more times than not, if there's a vehicle on the side road and it's been there for an hour, there's probably nobody in it, but our target audience, our tar- target audience are the people cutting through, they're speaking, don't live here. And fortunately, most of our cars have some windows tinted on, so you can't really see them there anyway.
So I should quit waiting?
Yeah, no, really. We may get there waving back and just don't see it. But no, that's, that's all we've got for the, the PD to wrap it up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Next, Water Department, Councilman Samuel.
All right, um, this is mainly for the, the village, I, you guys pretty much know what's going on, but I wanted to give everybody an update on the new well. And, um, at the last meeting, I, uh, explained that, uh, we had agreed to a contract and, uh, we're going to be utilizing Underwood, the contract was, was, the contract was agreed on eleven thirty and we're awaiting the file for signature. Total dollar amount, uh, for the contract will be approximately two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And, uh, the first step has already begun, we've got an engineer that's going to be going out to the site to do their initial site assessment. The one thing I did want to, uh, make sure that everybody was, um, aware of was that this is not going to come in quick, it's going to be probably a twelve, at least a twelve month, uh, operation to bring the well in and online. Hopefully, if everything goes well, maybe earlier, but at the outside, probably being conservative, twelve months is, uh, but you're gonna start, you'll start, you'll start seeing traffic coming in and out, uh, and it is, uh, situated off of Hoffman Road and you'll see an entrance to the new well site just before you make that right-hand turn coming, uh, if you're traveling north. Uh, right before you get to the entrance there on the, uh, to Woodland Circle, you'll notice that there will be a drive that'll be started in there, that's where the new well will be. It'll be back in the, back in the woods, back up in there. Also, council knows, but I did want to let the residents know that based on the capacity and the need for a separate independent well, we've decided that we're going to go with an independent building. Uh, we're also gonna put a chemical distribution system in there as well and a generator. Because it is a high producer, uh, this is gonna give us a little bit of wiggle room should we have that situation where we lost power. When we did lose power, um, I did brief everybody, we, we do have two wells that are under generator power and during the outage, it, it, it took care of the capacity of this village, no problem. But that was during the winter time, it was during that, you know, so there was not a lot of landscaping, watering going on and so forth, but the, with the two generators running, we had capacity to, um, to spare. We probably would not get so lucky if we were in the summertime and we'd be having to ask the, uh, residents to conserve. So with that being said, it was kind of a no-brainer when we did the research to, um, to have that be independent and operated with the generator to give us that extra, um, peace of mind. Any questions on the new well?
Nice job.
Thanks. Uh, the next item on there, and I really hope and have a little bit more on this, but I know that the, the citizenry are interested and this is regarding the golf course maintenance shed. Um, there, there, a couple of things have happened, um, that I'll, I will review. Number, number one is that the village has asked for and gotten a single point of contact for that, uh, overseeing of that maintenance shed. And that, and that single point of contact is now up in Pennsylvania, so it is with the, um, chief agronomist of the company. And that for us has been a blessing because Lisa will tell you, she was getting calls from all kinds of different people, wanting different kinds of information and the, that was the first thing that they, that we had asked them to do. So I'm, I'm happy to report that I, that I did get an update last Wednesday and they have finalized the plans up there. Uh, and we are, they are awaiting the budget approval from Brown Golf. And once that's done, then they will come back and, and show us what they're going to be doing, we'll doubt, we'll make sure that that is in compliance, what they said they were going to do and hopefully we can get, get things going again. You probably have seen some peripheral stuff being done out there on the site and, um, the, the, the main thing I think that we're gonna be able to give you that I think everybody wants to hear about is what are they gonna do to camouflage that thing? And, and of course, that was the high priority in our discussions that we had with them, they, they clearly had said what they were going to do, so we're just simply asking them to, uh, uh, hold them to what they said they were going to do, so more, more to come on that. Any questions on that?
Are they gonna put an irrigation system in for those plantings like they were supposed to?
Don't know, don't know. I, I haven't seen the final.
They're supposed to do that.
Yeah, that, there was, there was no commitment, I will say, there was no commitment from them to do that at any one of the sessions we had with the village, I know that they,
Yeah, there was.
Village talked about it, but there was no commitment from them to do it, so, and I, I reviewed those, I reviewed those ad nauseam, unfortunately, uh, but there was no commitment to do that, but they said they were, so let's wait.
It's supposed to be an all-green building also. And the roof is white.
Well, and the doors are, not green. I don't know if they're gonna paint those or not.
They are, they are not.
And then, well, and again, if they die, they have to replace them, they can't, they can't not replace dead shrubbery.
Yep.
So whether they choose to irrigate or not.
They'll paint the doors.
Um, it does have to be, they have to replace dead screening.
Yep, yep, okay, well, when, when, when that plan comes in, uh, we'll, we'll be able to kind of go over it again and make sure that they're doing what they said they were gonna do and what the council expects them to do.
Good.
Okay? Thank you. I think that's my last one.
Okay.
On that section.
Thank you.
We are now on to old business. Um, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing date, we had originally said February twentieth for the public hearing. And we have to change that date because Lisa is not available that day.
I'll be at the school.
Right, so.
School?
Yeah, I'm at the school.
Well, we already know that, um, Janet is not gonna be here.
Yeah, so it was the twentieth, what are we proposing?
Well, I thought the original date that was discussed was the thirteenth, correct?
Oh, thirteen.
Which would have been our, our regular meeting date.
Right.
I have twentieth, I thought we did discuss it, but I thought we had a separate one for the, I thought we called that the twentieth.
Well, no, but I just said Lisa's not gonna be here.
Oh.
Lisa's not gonna be here on the twentieth.
Yes, I got that.
So the thirteenth is our regular council meeting and we typically, we've done this up on regular council meetings without a problem.
And these, the things we're gonna look at, they're not real dicey, you know, yeah, they're pretty straight up.
I, I would think that, um, we should just go with the thirteenth.
Goodbye me.
Okay, so we'll change that, uh, public hearing date, uh, from the twentieth of February to the thirteenth of February. Do we have to approve that?
Uh, yeah, why don't we?
Okay, okay, so I'm just gonna make a motion that we change that public hearing date from February twentieth to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so the thirteenth, okay.
I'll be here.
Okay. Um, next item on the list, we talked about this and I think you guys all got copies of the long-range plan, um, tasks split up by council member. So, um, and again, this is just gonna be working documents moving forward for the, over the next years, um, so we can kind of actually focus on the long-range plan and who has got responsibilities. Um, now you'll see that some people have a lot more responsibilities than others, so you may be asked to work on a project in conjunction with another council member. I think the mayor and the finance officer have probably some of the most, most of the tasks. And, um, there are other people, uh, parks and streets and public safety and water may be asked to help on certain things if, if we need it. And there are certain things, certain tasks too, that we said more than one person would be working on and I kind of documented that in red, um, next to the items, so. We can, this'll probably be, you know, kind of our to-do list over the next few years and just keep us focused on what we said we were gonna do, which Gary said we needed to do and we all agreed, so assignments have been made.
I was just gonna say, what a great idea to assign these.
Assignments have been made and we're following through, so I actually took one of the tasks off my list by making this list, so.
Okay.
So there's any, again, it's just gonna be a working document. The next item is water infrastructure mapping initiative.
Yep, so, um, basically I'm gonna bring everybody up to speed. Council, you have a lot of background information that we discussed at our last working session, I just wanted to bring the residents up to speed. Uh, what this water mapping initiative is, is to take what maps we do have for our water infrastructure, which are very old, very dated, uh, and there's tons and tons of little notes and, and, and what we've discovered of course is over the years, they've identified issues where literally meters aren't and water lines aren't, and they've been doing pen ink changes all throughout using these, using these, over the course of many years. And it, um, it became, it pretty important really when the bobble link, uh, issue happened and to remind everybody what happened there was that there was a water line that was broken going into a house. And when we went back to turn off the valve that services that water line, the valve, it blew up. Which is of course in, in, indicative of our older infrastructure, which of course, everybody understands that one of these things have been buried and of course bobble link was our first, the first street, so these are back in the eighties. And throughout, and, and of course, it, it is, it has been on our plate to try to figure out how we're going to map our, our infrastructure and until that happened, that was really the catalyst that really forced us into looking. Um, we did, we had two different proposals and we went, uh, with the, uh, one that had the most options and was the most user-friendly uh, and also the largest of the, of the mapping systems that are out there, which is called, the company is ESRI. After conversations with them and, and others that have been on the system, who have utilized the system and going over the capabilities, uh, we, I reviewed it with the council, uh, the council wanted assurances regarding security, uh, around that infrastructure and, uh, they've been, we've been working on making sure that there was a successful security review to make sure that this was going to be safe and, and we, and we, it has gotten past that, so we are moving forward with, uh, the company ESRI. Great news though is that the company that actually produced these, uh, is, is, uh, still in the system and we're able to give, give, give this in digital form, uh, to them and they're going to actually give us, uh, at least our basic structure, uh, right away. So that's gonna be very helpful. The, 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 the system in terms of mapping, what we're figuring is if, if Jesse can continue on the same pace, it's not added with too much other things that are going on, about twelve to eighteen months is what, is what we're figuring. Um, it's, it's a process that's going to be ongoing as he does different things, so as he goes out to service a line or he goes out to do something with a valve, he will map it. And he's gonna have the equipment, it's right there on his phone, uh, we're purchasing a GIS, uh, uh, system that allows him to, you may have seen them with little pole and little disc on the top, uh, that's how they map the courses and things like that when they're mapping, putting those into the system. Anyhow, he'll be able to place that on the ground where he's at, press a button and it just drops a pin right there. And it, yes, it's very, very user-friendly, but it's very, very time-consuming. And, uh, probably one of the other significant issues that we really like is the ability to be able to send that data, just that little data, to the companies that are gonna be coming out to service the line, so when McFadden comes out to service a line, Jesse can send him that pin and he knows right where to go.
Wow.
It's, uh, it's, yeah, it's really very cool. So, uh, and, and this is, this is one of Jesse's twenty twenty-four goals, so, uh, he's, he's well on his way, so. Any questions? From the council?
No, nice job.
Good, thank you.
Oh, up to David, those are.
No, they're not. No, not to a given.
Okay, and next on the agenda is, um, the administrative assistant, um, job posting. Janet had some comments, which we made some changes to those, and also there were some questions about where resumes would be sent and how an application can be filled out, and I'm assuming that once posted, we can, I'll work that out with, with Lisa on how we've done that in the past. Um, so, and I would suggest that we post this immediately. Um, start looking for a administrative assistant, full-time, yes?
I wanted to kind of meet with you two, there was a couple of things under that are specific to the clerk that this person really shouldn't, like with the agenda. There might be just a little wording change I could.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, just don't wanna put something out there that they shouldn't really be doing.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Right, no, we can make, um, we can make final changes.
Okay.
Um, but as long as the council is, is on board with that, I guess, um.
I do have a question, I'm posting it immediately, I, I, I agree, you know, we need somebody. Are we prepared to bring that person on board if we get an application and they pass? When, when are we looking to actually fill the position for, for the?
I would say as soon as possible, I think there were some questions about where we, where we would position this person and if they had a computer, a computer could be gotten in days. Um, so that's not an issue as far as days, is not an issue as far as I'm concerned. And then as far as a place, an office, what they would work out of, um, there, there is space available. Um, the mayor could move office into the back or this person could be working in the back, there is a back office, so I, I think in my opinion, we don't have to worry about space or technology.
You weren't brought in before the first of the year ago.
No.
There's no way.
No.
So are you talking about where the, where the file cabinets are next to the conference room?
Yeah.
Do we have a desk for that person?
There's a desk in there.
There is a desk, there's a table in there and, um.
And where would we put all that stuff?
Well, some of it doesn't, some of it doesn't really, well, we've got other areas we could move it to.
Okay.
There's an area right back there.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like you guys have already gotten the logistics, I, I was concerned about the logistics and if we got, if we already got that down, cool?
I, I think we, we either, again, um, there are, there are three main offices there, one of them being the mayor's, which, you know, the mayor doesn't need a big office, the mayor could go in the back, um, and if, you know, so we could move people around up front.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I was just concerned about logistics, if, if we've got the logistics down, I'm good, you're good.
I think the only other thing is a computer and that's really a non-issue, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So I think as soon as we start looking, um, again, we can always have a start date of, you know, first work, workday in January if, if that's.
Well, I don't know.
If that's, if we could ever find a person that, that, that.
I don't know if you're gonna find one that.
Right, I mean, so that's why I think we need to start now and it's.
Who will be the situizer of this person, who will this person be reporting to?
I would say it would, that this position would report to the clerk, the, to Lisa, is what I would say.
Okay.
Lisa had, we haven't discussed that, but that's obviously my responsibility for Lisa. In the meantime. In the meantime, reports as mayor, kind of like Jesse works with you. I think, you know, we have to work through it, but we need to get another person in this office to help with clerical duties that are consuming Sharon's time and Lisa's time.
No argument from me.
Can I ask a question, only, only from my experience at the gym where we're looking to hire and the candidate pool is, it's just slim. If you had someone come in who was qualified, but maybe only wanted three-quarter time and was really good or even half-time, just to get somebody who was willing to do the work, I would like to propose that we consider that. Because we do a lot better at the fitness center hiring for cler, a lot of times for clerical and staff if we not, if they're not always pushing full-time. You just, it, it expands your pool of people.
Well, it's, it's, we, we could consider that. I do think though, that we were looking also for someone who might want to grow in the position too. And grow into do other, you know, other duties. So, there is room to, to learn more, to get more education, but, I mean, if, if the only person we could find only wants part-time-
Three-quarter time, something like that, and they're really, and they're really qualified, it would be worth considering.
Oh, I, I don't think we would not consider someone like that.
So, so Lisa will be then, would she be the point person then for putting together all of the paperwork that we need to have them brought on board in terms of-
I operate as HR too.
Right.
I do for all the other employees, yeah, so it comes to me.
So no problem?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
No issues?
Yeah.
Good, cool, cool. So you'll be setting up, you'll be doing, doing all the interviews and all that?
Well, I'm sure, I know who would be, but I would hope that I would be a decision-maker in that. Because it's something you have to, you know, fit with the, with the office.
I think you, um, I think you, Sharon should have input, because a lot of the duties would be hers. And I think any council member who's interested in, you know,
Yeah, I wouldn't mind helping out.
I wouldn't mind either.
Okay, so long as we don't have more than three.
Well, I was thinking about helping you out with the onboarding like I did with Jesse if you're okay with that.
Yeah, you did agree to it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm still kind of wrapping my head around what this person's going to actually do and what I could delegate and what Sharon could, in order to really know what we're going to do for onboarding.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I can, I can help out with the training plan and things like that. Those are the things that I think that we would, I would recommend that we have for any new position.
Definitely.
Should have a defined job profile.
I agree.
When they come on board, they should have goals, they should have a training plan.
Right. We have to do that for the new positions and we need to do it for the existing ones as well.
Now, you did a great job with Jesse's.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Anyhow, I'll help, I'll move it to you.
Thank you. So we will get this going?
Now.
Now.
Yep.
Everyone's in agreement with that? Yes.
Okay.
I need to go back to one thing on old business.
Yeah?
Public hearings, we have temporary structures, family living subdivisions, accessory buildings and special use permits. We do not have municipal on the list. Is that by omission or intentional?
I think that was by omission.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I do too, because I brought it up and we run it, it just, just missed it.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, you're right. I don't know how that got missed.
Because we got too many of them. Yeah, but if we're going to do it, we may as well put that in there.
But I think we had some discussion in the beginning saying we really didn't think we needed it. And then we discussed it again and said, yeah, maybe we do.
We may need to, we may need to refine it a little bit, but it is something that we really need to look at.
Does PZ have a list of, of the locations and the LPs?
We've got all of it, it was all sent to the council.
Okay, because I'll need all that, because I have to get all the contiguous property owners notified and all the work I have to do for.
Yeah, I can resend it. Yep.
That may have been why we omitted it because of the timeframe, because we wanted to do it in January first and we said, no, we don't have the time, you didn't have the time to do it in January, but February.
PZ has a meeting on Tuesday. And although I'm not on there, I'm helping them set their agenda and I will have them get the contiguous properties. They can do that.
Okay, great. I saw that somewhere, I have a document somewhere that has that. So I know you did give it to us, because I saw it.
The GIS genius, Tasha did it.
Oh, she was also looking at vacant?
We, yeah.
When, when does she think she's going to have an estimate on that?
I mean, I can talk about it now or I can put it on the next agenda.
Okay, you can put it on the next.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So do we have to do anything special to add zoning? Do we have to make a motion to add?
No, no, if it's, it was part of the recommendations, it was just, um, basically a copy and paste from the agenda just to put on to the minutes which were, um, just omitted by-
Okay.
Yeah, copy and paste. You're good.
Okay. On new business, what I did, or what we did, and I sent it out to everyone, was, well, I think a lot of people have been working on this, but we have law, um, pay scales for Moore County, law enforcement pay scales as far as different police departments and their salary ranges. Because one thing that we're lacking in our HR department right now are job descriptions, pay ranges. And we, we need to work on this and we need to focus on this and get this done. Probably within the next year, I'd really like to see us get this, get this firmed up. I think it, um, helps us onboarding new people.
Absolutely.
Um, working, you know, in promoting people, giving people merit raises, whatever. I think this is all that we need to kind of put a little more structure around our human resources department. We also have job descriptions that I've gotten some offline. Some of them were available and given to us by other departments. We have our own Foxfire job descriptions for the police department. I've got some from Southern Pines and some from Pinehurst. And I think it's important that we work with the chief and the police depart, the police officers as well as Don, you, working with, with all of us to get little more formal job descriptions, let's get some pay, pay scales wrapped around these job descriptions as well. And we also need to do it for our office staff, which we, we have not, um, we don't have updated versions of our office staff. I don't know if Jesse even has a job description in, that's in, I'd like to kind of copy either the format of Southern Pines or Pinehurst, you know, they're very, um, I mean, it's, it looks like a lot of work, but once we get one or a few of them, Don drops it in. They just kind of make it a little easier to change, we can update. Doesn't have to be too complicated, but I think we really need to formalize that.
Well, I have a job description for him, it's just a matter of putting it in whatever format you want to put, or whatever we agree on.
Right. And, and I think we need to do that for all of the positions. We need to do it for this new position, we need to do it for the, for Lisa's job, jobs, the many jobs that Lisa does, as well as Sharon for that finance, the deputy finance person. So, and the, and the police officer. So, this is something that I really think we need to do. And I think we, we should just figure out a way to start working on this.
Yep.
So, this is just information we can start with. And I'd love to get your ideas moving forward on making progress in this area.
So can we, can we make it an item for our, for our work session? A dedicated item to just, I mean, literally block off that work session for this project?
We can, if, if we think we can get it done in one, I think it's going to have to go on to numerous.
But we can chop it down though and we begin to set a plan in place on that day. I, I agree, the sooner, sooner the better.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, I think, go ahead.
Do you want to dedicate the work session specifically to this or call a special meeting to maybe?
I'd like to just propose the work session if, if-
If we, if we're not working on anything else that's too time-consuming, I think we can, we can add it to our work session and numerous work sessions probably, yeah.
Before the budget is what I'm hoping, we, we great to get that done, you know, while we're kind of in a little bit of a low.
Right, because the budget starts in about February, March.
Right.
That's coming soon.
So if we can kind of set a goal and be done before that with this, that would be, I think, advantageous to all of us to do that, so we're not, do it now.
I agree.
Phase one of this work session upcoming.
Okay.
Oh, so you want to, the one that, yeah. We don't have one this month, do we? Work session?
Uh, yes.
Oh, we don't?
Yes.
Oh, last year we didn't have one.
Yeah, 28th.
Okay. You want to do it then?
Sure.
Okay. We have some homework.
Um, well, the next thing on new business, and Gary, I don't know if you want to talk to this or you want me to talk to this?
Well, I, you can, you can say what it is and I'll tell you what we've done.
Okay.
About that.
All right. This next item on our agenda is Water Department Capital Depreciation and New Reporting Requirements Dictated by the LGC. The LGC is the, help me here, um, the, um,
Local.
Local government, um, they basically oversee local governments. Commission, that's what it is. Local government commission. And what this commission does is it basically monitors your audits, your annual reports to make sure that you're fiscally sound, that you're managing your, your assets and your, and your equipment and your budgets and you're operating responsibly. And our water department, because of the age of the infrastructure, has, basically, it hits a red flag where our capital assets and our infrastructure are over 50% depreciated. And it, it basically puts you into a yellow category where we now have to do special reporting because of that. And I will, and we have to, we have to file a report or at least respond to the league's questions within 60 days, which is probably now about 50 days, with a response to what we are doing, what's our action on this, on our water system. And our water system is in good shape. I don't want anyone to think that it's not. It's in fine shape, it's been maintained wonderfully and we are, we are reserving for infrastructure. We started doing that and we will continue to do that. And, um, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, so, um, this was brought up through the audit and the point of contact for us is Kevin, the auditor.
Ken.
Ken, the auditor.
Yes.
Uh, and, um, and as I've, we've talked about, we, we do have some over-infra structure and we, we know we, we have some areas that we need to be paying attention to. So, we actually had, we, Jesse really has, has begun the process of getting parts and pieces to gather and so that we're ahead of the curve as things begin to break down. As it turns out, uh, once this was identified by Ken, Jesse met with, talked with Ken over the phone and Ken gave him a, basically a, a, a a format for him to be able to address and gave him the areas that he needed to call out. So, he has done a draft, I've looked at it and David has it now and we're going to present that once it's in a better, in better shape, because it's not right now in very good shape. But we just really started working on it. And, and Jesse's done a lot of work on his own to be able to answer those questions. That 50-day market, you know, I can assure the council that's not going to be a problem. Because most of what we're already doing is what, is what needed to be done in terms of this audit was concerned. To include the budget line item that we had already in the system to take care of our aging infrastructure. So, we're, we're in a good place and I'll keep the council updated as this gets put into the system.
Great. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment period for anything, oh, yes, Mary.
Real quick, and, and I, I apologize if I, if I had turned out the lights for a second. Did we need to do anything with the?
No, that was part of the consent agenda.
Okay, well, okay. I asked, I, the, the budget audit.
Oh, yeah.
I couldn't remember if we talked about that. Okay.
We didn't, I was asking. Okay, now we have public comments for anything discussed during the meeting.
Okay. My name is Tom McCollum, I'm a free dog in court. Uh, one question, I have two things. Question, uh, or it's really more of information. My house was built in 1981, so it's approaching, it's over 40 years old. I don't know whether that's an issue with the water department or not, just thought I'd bring it up. Okay, uh, the second issue was in, with regard to job description. Something that I had done before in my past life is that I had my employees write up their own job description. They wrote up their job description and then, uh, as management, we reviewed those job descriptions and made changes accordingly. So it might help you out, that's all.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
That's it?
Any other?
My name is Chris Kregel, 25 Pine Tree Terrace. Sitting here listening to Gary and the column, this is my second one, so. I like how you say aging infrastructure, which I guess it is. We used to be assistant superintendent of water and sewer and hell, we're still alive. We were dealing, we were digging up old water main, wooden water main. So aging, I'm not exactly sure how old this system is.
Not that old.
It's about 50 years old.
From one point of view, it's your GIS and your valves, you can do them in the fire hydrants also. Does anybody actually go out and spin a valve, turn it? No, I'm going to give you a couple of ideas. I know there's an issue on bob link. That valve that broke going down by, I'm going to use Connie Street, I don't know the name of that street, right? Two-inch valve. It only takes like three turns to close. Six-inch valve takes anywhere between eight, 18, and 24, depending on the valve make, the manufacturer. So if there's no record or nobody has any idea what size valve that is, I could take a, a valve turning key and go boop and snap that valve instantly. But if you have records, and we had records, we had sheets writing, we know who, when that valve was put in, when, who turned it, how many turns it took, we GPSed it at the same time. So the, it's nice to have GPS on it or GIS, whatever you like to call it. But if nobody's out there turning it, valves like anything else, humans need exercise. You go turn off your toilet bowl valve, boop, snaps, now you have water. Everything needs exercise. Now, same thing with valve, uh, hydrants, do you flush them here? I don't know.
Yeah.
GIS, my, that's my point, without really good records, and GIS is very good, but unless somebody's out there actually exercising them every year, they're not going to work when you need them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other comments? Okay, well, um, now we are going to, we need to, I need to make a motion to go to a closed session?
You're kicking us out?
Yeah. Motion to reassess this. Okay, I'm making a motion to reassess this meeting.
And go into a closed session.
And go into a closed session. That's our good.
Got it.
Hall of favor?
Aye.